Called it Lord's order, the Irons and City Council Meeting on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. With us for our invocation tonight, we have Pastor Terry Jones with Resurrection and Hope Church. If you would stand for our invocation, or remain standing with the pledge of allegiance immediately following this.
Let us pray. Our most precious heavenly Father, we thank you first of all for your grace and your mercy. We ask, Lord, that you would bless each and every one of these elected officials here, Lord, that have dedicated their time and their effort to run this city. We ask that you would just rest your hands upon them and guide them in every decision that is being made here this evening to those that they have made in their entire career. We ask, Lord, that you would bless each and everyone that is here attending today, that they are interested enough, Lord, to come up to see what the business is being done for this fair city. We thank you for a city such as Ironton, where we can live, we can prosper, and by the way we can just earn a living, so that we can celebrate the name of Jesus Christ, and that we can give Him the due. We ask all of this in His precious name.
Thank you Pastor Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all copies and orders? Here.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Harry.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of amendments from the regular council meeting on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the finance committee meeting on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have any edits, additions, omissions to those minutes? On seeing none, this amendment is staying as approved. Next on the agenda, we have audience participation. If you'd like to address council, please step to the podium, state your name and address. You will have five minutes to state your comments.
My name is Michael Mollmeyer, five ten Washington Street, Ironton, the Fire Chief of the City of Ironton, and I would just like to thank the Finance Committee for their approval or their recommendation for that mini pump that was last rescued. I would also like to thank the mayor and the members of council that were able to come last Friday night to see the demo. It's a very important piece to add to our department, help the city, and I'm just glad that it was a favorable recommendation, and I also ask you, when they do read the resolution, please support it in favor of the department and the citizens. If anyone had any questions on, yeah, about it, if you have an answer here in my panel log.
I actually had a question. I think Captain Thomas back there was explaining that there should be a reduction on others' insurance.
Yes, the ISO, it's called ISO, the Insurance Service Organization, they come in and rate your department about every five years, and the more pieces of apparatus that you have and are able to put out on the road as a first-line unit can give you more points towards, towards your rating. And this will be a fifteen-hundred gallon a minute pump vehicle, which will be able to be rated and used towards ISO, as well as the, I mean, kick onto the potential for the Third Street paving project, which would increase the water project, that could help as well. So, you know, this piece of equipment will go a long ways in increasing our rating, which in turn will, you know, lower residents' insurance potentially. So, thank you.
See you at the prescient.
My name is Tim Cole, I'm from the Han Loser and Parks Law Firm in Columbus, Ohio. I'm here on behalf of the Counseling Center tonight, which is located at three twenty-eight Center Street. As many of you know, TCC is a non-for-profit behavioral health entity that provides, among other things, addiction treatment services for those suffering from drug and alcohol addiction. TCC's addiction treatment services also include ancillary services, such as assisting pregnant individuals with prenatal care, providing dental care to those who need the treatment, vocational development, and also financial recovery. Ultimately, it's TCC's long-term plan is unlike most for-profit entities, and that is because it hopes that one day addiction treatment services are no longer necessary. Today, however, there is a need, and while those needs exist, TCC strives to provide top-of-the-line services to those suffering from addiction, offering the most comprehensive treatment in the region. To provide those services, TCC has invested significant sums of money in the Ironton community through its development of three twenty-eight Center Street. Notably, TCC was invited by the Lawrence County Economic Development Corporation and several other locals, including judicial entities, to open an addiction treatment facility and provide services to those Ironton and Lawrence County residents in need. The city and local courts even knew of the intended location for the facility, approved the plans and designs, issued occupancy permits, and attended groundbreaking ceremonies and written cutting exercises. With the city's full knowledge and support, TCC has invested over three million dollars in three-two-eight Center Street location and has provided numerous Ironton residents services. And that brings us to why we are here tonight. Over the past several months, the city has taken on the notable endeavor of revamping a zoning code that has not been substantially updated in over four years, and TCC appreciates the process has been a massive undertaking for this council. And while TCC appreciates, sorry, I can't say that tonight, appreciates council's effort, the application of the zoning code currently before this council unfairly and unlawfully targets those seeking and in need of addiction treatment services, specifically as it relates to housing. Of particular relevance is ordinance number twenty-two sixty-eight. Number twenty-two sixty-eight facially discriminates against those seeking recovery housing. Put simply, ordinance number twenty-two sixty-eight creates an access-to-housing issue. In fact, similar ordinances across the country have been found by federal courts to violate the Fair Housing Act. This unfair and unlawful treatment is related to who is permitted to live in the city's newly-proposed central business district. Ordinance number twenty-two sixty-eight allows some, but not all, people to live in the central business district. This is because twenty-two sixty-eight allows residential units as a permitted use, but expressly forbids inpatient or residential treatment facilities, recovery houses, outpatient drug treatment, and hospitals for, quote, "drug addicts." Addiction by law is considered a disability, and those suffering from the disability receive extra protections under the law. Ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight's current restrictions are no different than telling a specific group of individuals, whether it be because of their race, religion, sexual orientation, that you can't live in this part of town, but everybody else can. That, on its face, violates numerous federal and state laws. In short, even though we do not believe that it was this council's intent to discriminate, ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight tells those suffering from addiction that because of your addiction, you can't live in the central business district. TCC's overarching desires to work in concert with the city to help provide services for those who desperately need them, but ordinance number sixty, or sorry, twenty-two sixty-eight needs to be reworked and reconsidered. To accomplish this, TCC requests at the third reading to table until it is drafted in a way that comports with state and federal law. We do need to emphasize that if ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight is passed tonight, that it will effectively prohibit TCC from operating its facility at three twenty-two, or three twenty-eight Court Street. To protect individuals that are currently residing there and TCC's significant monetary investment in property, TCC may be forced to seek legal action, including immediate injunctive relief. We do sincerely hope that a collaborative solution can be reached, as we've done in the city of Portsmouth, Clay Township, Sardinia, and that litigation is not necessary. Thank you again for your time tonight, my five minutes are up. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask them at this time.
Mr. Cole, you do realize that TCC has never been in compliance with any zoning or family member legislation, correct?
Well, it depends on...
And right now, you do realize that they are over the limit of three non-related family members, correct?
Well, I think there's two parts to that. One, there's, under the current zoning code, there is no definition that would fairly apply to what TCC's facility is. So there's several arguments that it might be a permitted use as it currently sits. Other people could argue that it isn't. Now, that also being said, the way that the code is currently set up, it's five unrelated individuals.
But you're, and you're aware that it's currently over that limit, correct?
Again, there are sixteen people, as I know, living there.
So you're eleven people over what has been in, on, in the codified ordinances since nineteen seventy-seven. So you're eleven people over, correct? So you're coming, you're coming, you're threatening all legal actions and everything else when you are not in compliance, correct?
No, I don't think that is the case. I think the way that the...
You just said sixteen people.
Sixteen people live there, but the way it's set up is that five unrelated people can live in a unit.
How, you have, you have units for all those people?
As long as there is a common living space, a kitchen and a living space, then those five unrelated individuals can live in a unit.
So it's broken up into multiple units?
That is, that is the way they are going to set it up.
But that is the way they're going to set it up. It's not set up that way currently, correct? So you're currently out of compliance, right?
That is not correct. No, I'm not going to say that they are not currently in compliance, no.
With sixteen people living in one residence, correct?
And they are also, they are also there based on the city's representation. They should, they are allowed to be there with certain occupancy permits. They were invited by the city to be there.
I vehemently disagree with that. Mr. Klein himself has tried to contact TCC quite a long time ago, and we never heard anything back from him. That's council. I don't know who you're talking with, but...
Well, I spoke to the code enforcement officer a few weeks ago. We had a phone call.
She hasn't been.
It's Jill. I talked to Jill. We're working on the issue. Now, again, we're not, we're, again, we don't think that there's any discriminatory intent, but when you apply the ordinance as written, it is clearly discriminatory.
But you're currently, you're currently just not regarding any of the ordinance we have on the books anymore, with the business structure, right?
It all depends on how that building is defined under the code, and as of right now, there's not a good definition.
If you have sixteen people living in one residence, that's what's on the...
If it's defined as a residence, but that's the question, is it a residence? No, there's being...
You're people living there.
But it is, it is a treatment facility. It is not a typical residence.
Negative.
Twenty-two sixty-eight, it also prohibits use of adult entertainment facilities. Are we discriminating against adult entertainers?
Potentially, that's not why I'm here tonight.
Auto service stations. Are we discriminating?
That's not a protected, that's not a protected class of individuals. The difference here, and that's, I want to make clear...
Excuse me. Recognize car wash facilities. Are we discriminating against car wash entertainers? Car wash users?
That's not a protected class. That's not a protected class of individuals.
New and used auto sales, lots of showrooms, are we discriminating against car salesmen and buyers?
It's not a protected class.
Funeral homes, are we protecting, are we against dead people?
Also not protected.
We're not protected. Hospitals, emergency rooms.
Depends on who you're treating, but it depends to whether they're a protected class.
It depends, that's what it depends, okay. EMT and ambulance stations.
Not protected class.
But there could be disabled people that require that or something, maybe?
Maybe.
Outpatient drug treatment.
You're absolutely discriminating there.
Okay, and that's different than hospitals?
It depends on what the definition of a hospital is.
So it depends.
Yes.
And residential treatments of buildings?
Discrimination.
That's not, that's not, what I'm trying to say is, I don't think we were pointing out that inpatient residential treatment is not allowed. I think what we're trying to do for our downtown is to give it a definition of, well, all the permitted uses, honestly, all the traditional retail businesses, so forth. Do you understand what I'm trying to say on that? So I don't think, I don't, I don't think we were discriminating your company in the, you know what I'm trying to say? I don't think it's, it's not what you're, it's not what you're trying to play it out, is what I'm trying to say.
What I'm saying is...
I also like to say, I'm sorry, go ahead. You're respectful of me, so I'm...
I didn't mean to interrupt you at all. What I'm saying is, we, TCC isn't here today saying, council, you are, absolutely, your intent is to discriminate, but when the, the way the statute is written, it says that you can have a residence in the central business district, that you can live, but as soon as you say other individuals can't live here, what the law says is that's discrimination, and you are allowed to have residences in the central business district as a permitted use.
It states, clearly states that it has to be on the second floor, right?
It does.
So that's currently on the ground floor, right?
That's...
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Leave it away, there's discrimination.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I'm here to solve problems, and I'm not sure why I would be...
That would seem like it. Mr. Barrett?
I just want to make it clear or get some clarity, I guess.
Sure.
The codified ordinance was written in nineteen seventy-seven, initially establishing five unrelated people per dwelling, okay? So maybe that's, to me, that's the word we're kind of dancing around here. And council put a new ordinance in, reducing that number from five to three. When TCC first approached Ironton about opening a facility, was the, was the express interest explained that this was going to be a treatment slash residential facility? Because my understanding, and if I'm being correct, please, someone's set straight, my understanding was that this was proposed to the city as a treatment facility without any consideration for residential occupancy. And if there was going to be residential occupancy, it seems to me that TCC's attorneys should have maybe looked a little closer to say, what is the maximum number of people that could reside in this facility, whether, whether it be five or three?
Sure.
Even if it's five, it's three times that as it currently stands. So I guess the clarity that I'm looking for is, it seems that I, I can't speak for anybody else, but I was under the impression that this was going to be a treatment facility only, and somewhere along the way, gears were shifted and, and I think there seems to be an awful lot of attention being made to zoning areas around town when the original, the original codified ordinance was written stating dwellings in the city of Ironton, it didn't list R-one, R-two, B-one, B-two, it strictly prohibited five or more other type of people, so.
Yeah, and I think that that, you kind of hit the nail on the head, right? This, this current zoning code is forty years old, things have changed, we now have this need for addiction treatment, whether it be housing, inpatient, whatever it is, that was never defined in the zoning code until now, and I believe that's proposed in twenty-two eighty, where it's actually defined. So the issue is, under the current definitions that were drafted in nineteen seventy-four and putting it, there's not a ready-made definition for the building that TCC operates. It could be a hospital, it could be a residential building. It's, it's depending on what the definition is. And what I, what I want to answer is...
Sir, listen, your time's up, and...
Well, I'm responding to his question.
I'm going to give Mr. Harvey his question, no sir.
Counsel first, his question. You won't let me answer, counsel?
We have, we have been discussing this for better part of fourteen months. You come on the third reading and threaten law action. Your time is up.
I've been working behind the scenes for months.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to take a different approach and tell you that I, I appreciate TCC's investment in our city. I appreciate the revenue that TCC generates for income tax from professionals that work there. I think that it's an upgrade to what used to exist on that corner, and, and my ultimate job, counsel, number one is the safety of our residents. And we were asked numerous times over the last few years to take a look at places throughout town that, that were out of, out of zone, that were communal living, that were doing business in residential areas. And, and so one of the approaches that we took was to get those out, and that's, that's still my intended goal. Residential areas should be residential areas. We, we want, we also didn't want to just focus on that, we wanted to take a comprehensive look at our zoning, and, and one of the things that came out of that was the central business district. As you've said, it wasn't the intention of, of council to discriminate, and, and I, I think there is a need for the things that, that you all, the services you provide in our community. There, there are definitely people in our community that benefit from the services that you provide. The problem I have is the lack of communication, and you mentioned the word collaboration when it first came onto the podium. I don't feel like it's been a collaborative approach with, with the municipality. L E D C, whoever else that you talked to, and because you're a business, the, the zoning officer is some dude out of Athens who could give a shit less about Ironton. And so we, we could give a shit less about him, to be quite honest. So I, so I don't care what he had to say, if, if you're in compliance or not. That all being said, I'm conflicted because I, I appreciate what you're doing. My second job as a councilman is to make sure that we have enough revenue to stay in the black, and, and I believe that, I believe that you all are doing it right, but again, we can't pick and choose teams, right? So I, so I've expressed to them in this body and everybody that's been here for the last twelve months, I want to do right by our citizens, I want to do right by our financial responsibility for the purse strings of the city. So, so I've been conflicted, and I, I am willing to table twenty-two sixty-eight tonight, but it's not because you all have been fair in your, in your part of collaboration. And I think that TCC could have saved a whole lot of money by coming to talk to us and saying, hiring you. So that's, that's what I, and I think that we're absolutely moving forward, that we have several representatives tonight that would be more than willing to work collaboratively. Said we've done this in Portsmouth, Sardinia, other areas, and it's all worked out very well, no litigation, anything like that. And that's, that's the goal, that's absolutely the goal, is to not have litigation over anything. And to work with the city, because they want to be a partner with the city, so I appreciate that. The only question that I'll leave you with, and maybe I haven't seen it, ordinance twenty-two eighty defines addiction treatment facilities, inpatient treatment facilities. Is there anywhere in the zoning code where those facilities are going to be permitted uses in the cities? And it's an honest question, I haven't seen it, but as far as I'm, as far as I know, they have now been defined under the code, which is, which is a fine step, but there's, there's nowhere in the city where there are permitted use.
The B-two, B-three?
And, and B-one and hospital.
And B-one and hospital.
But are they, are they, I haven't seen that ordinance. I understand that hospital is defined to include drug addicts, but I haven't seen anywhere where those definitions are permitted uses. And again, I'm just trying to...
We have another hearing on ordinance twenty-two eighty, March twenty-third, I believe, at five forty-five.
I worked on twenty-two eighty in discussion with Brigham. He felt that the language in, that section F would encompass those definitions.
Section, when you refer to drug addicts and the hospitals?
Yeah, that or tape, yeah, like, yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha. And I, I think that's where the confusion is, is once you, now you're defining these residences, but these, these addiction treatment facilities, inpatient facilities, but there's nowhere where it's permitted use, again, there's some confusion as to what falls in.
The section that you were referring to, that was moved, well, it's proposed to be moved from residential to business. So I read your letter, and it said, you said just B-two and hospital, which is incorrect because the higher zone, B-three, would kind of feed down on it, so it would include all those business areas and hospital zones, but not include residential ones, so, so that's just a...
Then it made that a typo, but yes, I understand that the B-three also encompasses the B-two.
That's correct.
And which would include hospitals?
That's correct.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Hi, Christina Byrne, seventeen seventy Center Road, Gallo Police. You guys probably know who I am by now. Just wanted to reiterate our second collaborative meeting, as it was by council, will be held tomorrow, February twenty-third, two P M. Lawrence County Recovery has agreed to host that, twenty-nine oh-three South Fifth Street. I'm understanding it's out the old tree building, it's got probably means more people. I have the street address. I, I also did want to reiterate, we've really been working hard to increase the collaboration here. We've provided statistics regarding how many residents are from this area and the surrounding counties, the number of employees that would potentially be cut back due to these ordinances. In particular, I know you said that you are not saying there can't be inpatient residential treatment. That is exactly what this current ordinance would do, as stated. If we cut down to five residences in those homes that are currently inpatient residential treatment, means they are twenty-four seven staffed, I'm looking at probably sixty to seventy layoffs, numerous people homeless and overcrowding in jails. We employ a lot of people in Ironton, I've been there in Ironton, Texas for, well, over a decade, happy to do that. I participate in activities in Ironton, even though I'm not from here, because I spend a lot of time here. I know there's also been discussion and meetings of the need for workforce here because people are leaving. A lot of our residents and the residents of my colleagues here, they work here. That is, you're adding to your workforce. When they complete treatment, they're buying homes here, their kids are going to school here, so... I, I would love to have you guys attend, um, that meeting and, you know, I, I realize we were a little late to the game and getting started, um, with this. I'll just be honest, I don't do policy stuff, so when people are talking ordinances and numbers, that's, that's not my deal. Um, but we definitely have been a presence since November, just really trying to, uh, to come to some solution here that is good for our residents, that is good for our employees, and as well as the city of Ironton. Again, I, I agree. I don't think the intention is to discriminate, um, but I do know based on last year's uh, registration and the current registration file, none of the group living that supplies the elderly, um, transition living for youth, for individuals with developmental disabilities are on those lists. It's, it's all residential substance use treatment. Um, I know that the one house was here before the ordinance, maybe, maybe it wasn't. There are a lot of other houses that have nothing to do with substance use treatment that are not being properly run and nobody's been talking about that. Um, so again, February twenty-third tomorrow. No, wait, that's today.
That's what we were just.
Twenty-four. I wrote the date down.
What time?
Um, two P M at twenty-nine oh-three South Fifth Street. Um, I don't know how much room you have, but they have plenty of rooms, so, um, council's welcome. If there are active community members that would go as, as treatment providers and as professionals. If there are things that we can do to better the community, we wanna do that. That's why we go into this field. Um, so I'd, I'd love to see you guys there and to have some further discussions.
Questions? Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Moving on. On communications, there are none. Reports, there are none. On the ordinances, Martha, would you please give ordinance twenty-three oh-nine, First Street?
To adopt the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bye.
Finance committee give ordinance twenty-three oh-nine a favorable recommendation. I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we suspend the rules and give second, third reading, possible adoption.
Craig, second. You have a motion by Bob and a second. A little bit of discussion before this. Uh, this is. John, this is pretty time sensitive, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Terry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
The rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three oh-nine. Martha, would you please give that second and third reading?
To adopt the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three and declaring an emergency second reading.
To adopt the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three and declaring an emergency third reading.
Mike. I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty-three oh-nine.
Adopt.
And that we adopt. Thank you. Craig, second. A motion by Mike and a second by Craig to adopt ordinance twenty-three oh-nine. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Terry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three oh-nine has been adopted. Moving on, ordinance twenty-two sixty-five, would you please give that a third reading?
Changing permitted uses regarding hospitals in chapters twelve sixty-two point zero-two, twelve sixty-six point zero-two, and twelve seventy-six point zero-three for the codified ordinances of the city of Ironton, Ohio, third reading.
Uh, Craig, please adopt. Nate, second. We have a motion by Craig and a second by Nate to adopt ordinance twenty-two sixty-five. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Terry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two sixty-five has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance twenty-two sixty-seven, would you please give that third reading?
Establishing boundaries for the central business district zone, third reading.
Craig.
Move to table ordinance twenty-two sixty-seven.
Bob.
A second motion to table.
I have a motion by Craig and a second by Bob to table ordinance twenty-two sixty-seven. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
No.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
No.
Terry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two sixty-seven kind of tabled.
Bob, a question for Mac on this. We used to table back in the olden days, and you've been there for forty years. And you pull up table anytime. Then somebody may have really said, perhaps come up the next meeting, or goes away. What's the legal?
I think you think about a reconsideration. Has to be reconsidered by next meeting. Someone make a motion to remove it from the table. If it gets four votes, then it would, then someone make a motion to adopt.
So if the, no one does that the next meeting, but let's say they do it a month from now, can they still do that?
Yes.
Okay, that's why we're all. Short all the type and strength that has to do with the next thought.
Moving on to ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight, would you please give that third reading?
Creating a central business district for the city of Ironton, Ohio, third reading.
Craig, move to table ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight.
Bob, second. I have a motion by Craig and a second by Bob to table ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
No.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
No.
Terry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two sixty-eight has been tabled. Moving on to resolutions. Martha, would you please give resolution twenty-three ten, reading?
Strongly urging the Ohio governor and members of the Ohio general assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession level.
Bob.
Uh, the favorable recommendation made to resolution twenty-three ten, uh, does need to suspend the rules, but, uh, passing, but I would make a motion that we pass it. Nate?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Discussion. Uh, if passed, would request the clerk send signed copy to Representative Stevens and Senator, State Senator Wilkins, certified now?
Can we stick to the amendments, please? I have a motion by Bob and a second by Nate to pass resolution twenty-three ten. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Terry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three ten has passed. It's moving on to resolution twenty-three eleven. Would you please give that reading?
Authorizing the purchase of a two thousand twenty-two Ford F five fifty Mini Comfort Firetruck for the city of Ironton Fire Department through the NPPG of the Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Bob.
Yep. Resolution twenty-three eleven has favorable recommendation, so I would like to make a motion to pass twenty-three eleven.
Nate?
Second.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Nate to pass resolution twenty-three ten. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Uh, moving on to miscellaneous. I have something to miscellaneous, guys. I meant to mention this the past couple meetings. Don't forget the Ohio Ethics Commission, um, Monday, May fifteenth, May gets here faster than the twentieth, so please don't forget that. Counsel and any other elected officials. Any other miscellaneous?
Yeah, the.
Craig. Bob. Craig, Bob.
Uh, financial, January financials. A little of this.
Make a motion?
Yeah. For six five, the card events.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Craig to accept the January financials, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Terry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Those are accepted. Any other miscellaneous? Nate?
Senator, did you get a dumpster day for March?
Uh, yeah, actually. Six through, um, the eleventh.
Six through the eleventh? Thank you.
Same place?
Yeah, at the Blue Sage Garage, Wall of Hands building.
Oh, so we're at the same.
Yeah.
What was that date again there?
Uh, March sixth through the eleventh.
Sixth through the eleventh.
That's more belt things than what we're at. Craig.
Just a clarification, um, if were the two of us applying to attend this firm's meeting tomorrow, um, to discuss the business that violates sunshine laws, just wanna make sure we don't have that happen. That we communicate each other who, who's gonna be able to.
I don't feel at work, but.
Yeah, I'm in there. But just wanna make sure that I have three people sure that we violate sunshine laws. Show hands down if they're.
Yeah, I, I can tell.
I'll be there.
Okay, two people, that'll be there. Bob, you're going?
How about?
I don't.
Jake.
Man, they could. They can all attend, just information.
Discussing.
You just can't.
That's the original purpose of the meeting, to discuss.
Well, I mean. Yeah. That's why, that's why I was scared.
Yeah, I guess. They were just gonna make a presentation to you. They just do that.
Yeah.
I think it's worth the Jacob's serve, sure. How about? I was getting one of those. No, I, I agree. Take it, point that out.
Good. Craig, move in here.
Second, sir.
By Bob, or Craig, a second by Bob to adjourn tonight's meeting. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Terry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Many adjournments. Thank you guys for coming.